Why allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Now is my mic on? Yes. All right. Under our first order of business is recognitions, and I'll turn it over to Sandy Kovac for advanced placement scholar recognition.
Thank you. We're once again very pleased to be able to share with you information regarding just our outstanding students who are shining again as they continue to take challenging curriculum, challenging academics, and perform at high levels. As you may recall, Advanced Placement is a program where students are taking courses, they take tests end of April, early May. If they earn a three, four, or five on those tests, that does provide them the opportunity to earn college credit depending on the requirements of the college or university. So this evening we have information on what they refer to as AP Scholars. The vast majority of these students are 2014 seniors, some 11th graders. At a minimum, you have to have had three AP courses in order to qualify as a scholar. So first, we start out with a list of 58 students who are considered AP Scholars. That means they receive scores of three or higher on three or more exams. So quite an amazing list at that place, at that status. Next, we have what's referred to as AP Scholar with Honor. There are 31 students. That's up. We had 19 in that category last year. These are students who received an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams, and again, scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. Then they have a category of AP Scholar with Distinction, and we have 30 students in this category. We had 27 in 2013 and only 10 in 2012. Granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams that were taken, and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. Keeps narrowing it down. And then finally, their top category, National AP Scholar. We had three this year. Granted to students in the United States who receive an average score of at least four on all AP exams taken, and scores of four or higher on eight or more of those exams. And there are a few in there that took 11 AP exams in their high school career.
Wow.
The total scholars we have this year in Hudson is 119. Last year, we had 108, and in 2012, 75. So again, just to say kudos to our staff and our students. It's a K-12 effort, and then our students just really taking the challenge of taking those high-level courses to make themselves ready, college and career ready. Thank you.
All right. Well, congratulations to all those students who received this recognition. And I just have one clarification question, because you had said that most of these are 2014 seniors who have already graduated.
Correct.
And a few are juniors, and I know it goes to the minimum number of exams taken. But can sophomores take AP classes? Are they eligible to?
They can, and this year, we have our first pretty much specific 10th grade with our AP Human Geography. So we've started so that we'll see more now 11th graders probably on the list because they'll have that one 10th grade course as well. The vast majority, though, are 11th and 12th grade courses.
And to get 11 exams taken in that span, then they're averaging over two AP courses a semester, I assume?
Yes, because the majority of them are year-long courses. There's a few, too, that are throwing in online, so they're taking even additional courses beyond what we offer.
So they could have a majority of their classes be AP classes? That's possible?
Yes.
Wow. All right. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda is any other comments on that one, I guess, before I move on? All right. Moving on then to superintendent's report, and turn it over to Mary to talk about more good news regarding the 3M Grant.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am very pleased this evening to announce that we have received a second grant for Hudson High School from 3M to extend our partnership with them to advance STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math learning experiences for Hudson High School students. At the May 13 board meeting, we shared the good news that 3M had awarded the high school a 3M Gives Ingenuity Grant of $20,000. Now today, 3M has awarded another grant, a second grant to Hudson High School, for $40,003 to support the STEM Plus Academy. Hudson High School Principal Peg Schumaker submitted both grant requests, and will speak about how the new funds will be used. We also welcome Meredith Crosby. Yes?
No.
Okay, no.
So I've been watching. I don't know if we've had traffic delays or something. That's possible. So allow me to represent, and anyway, perhaps she'll come, and if we have time, maybe we could say thanks later. So want to talk to you about these grants are very, very exciting in order to continue our work in Project Lead the Way. A couple of the items that they're purchased for would be robotic arm, as well as VEX kits, things that really keep us moving in the Project Lead the Way arena that we're moving. The other piece that we're really excited about is we'll also use these monies to update our outdated science labs for, in particular, veneer software. Veneer is a dynamic data logging sensor experience that really prepares students, next-generation engineers and scientists. And so, under the supervision of Vicki McLaughlin, we're also using a portion of the grant to, like I said, update those sorely outdated science labs. So we are thrilled with the partnership with 3M and look forward to continuing partnership with them as well as other industry partners. Thank you.
Thank you. And want to extend our thanks to 3M, and if our representative from 3M shows up, I think we'll hopefully have an opportunity to recognize her maybe before this meeting adjourns. But it's very gratifying to see the partnership between 3M and our school system. Certainly, there are a lot of people who have been employed, either are employed, or have had great careers at 3M that now reside in the Hudson School District. And to see that kind of support definitely is a partnership that will benefit us in the long run. So does anyone else have any? Tom?
I'm just curious about the amount of the grant. $40,003? Is that, was it a stock transfer or something?
[laughing]
Anybody know?
Interest on the $40,000 maybe. I don't know.
My guess is it may have been the list of requests that the high school submitted. Peg?
Actually, we were $3 over budget, and they granted us that as we put together our priority list. So anyway, they were gracious and granted us an additional $3.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Thanks for that clarification. Yes, Lynn?
I just want to thank you for your work. You have a plenty busy plate with all you have going on at the high school, so thanks for reaching out and taking the time to get those partnerships in place.
All right. Very good. Now, we will move on to reports, and back to Sandy Kovac talking about the 2014 ACT results.
And more good news to share regarding ACT. ACT is a curriculum-based measure of college readiness that's required by many universities for entrance, especially in the Midwest. And our scores then reflect students in grade 12 who took the ACT as juniors or seniors. Do you think it's not? All right. Tim, I'm going to have to have you click to the next. And as you can see, our score, our average score for 2013-14, 23.8, a very solid performance. When we look at future, I just want to make sure I point out right away that during last year's legislative session, the assessments that were approved now to begin this school year in 2014-15 include the ACT for all Wisconsin juniors. So when you look at that score, and you'll see in a little bit what our percentage of students currently taking the assessment, but this March, all juniors in the state of Wisconsin will be taking the ACT. So it really starts us all at a whole new baseline as we go through. Next. So we compare ourselves with the Big River Conference, and then I know in the Hudson Star Observer, they also compare to regionally, where we came out on top, and then within our Big Rivers Conference, we too come out on top with our score, average score of 23.8. And then here's where you can see the percent tested. We also have a very high score, similar to River Falls, with 77.8 of our students. And now, when I start sharing this information next year, that will be 100%, 100% of our students taking that assessment. Next slide, please. When we compare to Wisconsin comparable-sized high-performing districts, this year again, we come out on top with our 23.8, and a very strong showing as well when we're doing, looking at the percent that they test. So this, to me, is kind of one of our really key comparison groups, because we're looking at very similar-sized districts, and also size as well as the demographic makeup of those cities. And then our last group, as you know, we always compare ourselves to the highest-performing districts in the state of Wisconsin, and this continues to give us continued opportunities for growth as we compare ourselves to their overall composite score, as well as the percent tested. So again, just thinking about the next time we come with ACT, it will be 100% all students, new baseline. And our ninth and 10th graders, then, very similar to what we've been doing in the past, we currently have been doing the Explore Test in ninth grade, the Plan Test in 10th, those are pre-ACT. They're sunsetting those tests, and they're starting up what they call ACT Aspire. So very similar, again, aligned to the career and college readiness benchmarks of the ACT. So our ninth graders now will take the ACT Aspire in the fall and the spring. 10th grade is just the spring, and then obviously, in March, the entire state will be taking the ACT in March with our 11th graders. Thank you.
So just to clarify, you said ACT will, everyone will be taking, what about schools that require SAT? If they do, then the students have to take that in addition to the ACT?
Correct. So if you're applying for a school or you need the SAT, you'll need to do that on your own.
Very few schools have to, almost every school, I think, out there, I've seen takes ACT now.
So the opportunity for students is they have one that is paid for by the state. They still have the opportunity, then, if they want to increase their score, they can take it on their own.
Question?
Yes, go ahead.
Just curious, what is, you know, some of these other high-performing districts, like Whitefish Bay, are they doing extra prep classes? They must be doing something that's ACT-focused.
We've had some conversation with Whitefish Bay, and we aren't finding that there's anything too over and above what we're doing. We're doing some college prep as well. They're a district with very, well, I guess I would say their demographics are quite different from ours.
Yeah. How about some of the other schools there? Are there 26?
Similar. Mequon and Cedarburg, Elm Brook, they too, there's some different demographics as well as there, if we would compare their per pupil spending, there would be some differences there as well.
I just wonder if they did, they're doing like specific prep classes for the ACT?
Right, right.
All right. Thanks.
Carrie, did you have a question?
Yes, Mr. President. Sandy, are these only reflective of junior scores? So when you say next year, this will be 100%, so there'll be no seniors in the totals?
Right. This, our score is reflective about the 12th graders who took it as juniors or seniors.
Okay.
Yep. So next year, when I report, you're right. It'll only be for the 11th graders, then, who take. I'll probably, well, I don't know. I'll have to see. That's a good question.
Is that what all of these other figures are?
I guess I will have two scores. I'll probably have all 11th graders, and then I may still have a report from ACT on the, anyone who's taken it again as well. Carrie, I don't know the answer to that. I'm realizing. I don't know how the reports will come out after this year.
But are we comparing the same grades here with the other schools?
Yes. Yep. So this is taken from the Wisconsin DPI site. Yes, so this is comparable data.
Okay. Thank you.
Another question about the ACT with it going to 100% participation. Are they, I'm just thinking back to my kids who are already out of school. In fact, my first took a practice SAT or practice ACT, that was like 12 years ago or something. But do we have a test that is going to be taken on one day? Or I know that kids usually get to pick. It's offered like every other month during their junior year. Or is this going to be all taken statewide on one day?
Statewide on one day. I'm going to just clarify a little, because there is one day statewide, and then one day as a makeup. The one day statewide happened to fall this year after our calendar was set, and it falls during our spring break. So our students will be taking it on the makeup date.
All right. Very good. And that's coming up to spring, then?
Yep, March.
Very good. Lynn?
Mr. President?
Yes, Sandy.
Sandy, if we, if our students have to take it on the makeup day, will there be another day that they can make it up if they are sick on the makeup day?
No.
Oh, wow.
They could still take it on their own for a score for college entrance, but it would affect us. If they're not there, it'll affect our participation rate for that accountability benchmark. But what we're told is students, there will be a high attendance rate that day, because students are going to want that opportunity.
Any other questions, then, on the 2014 ACT results?
And then obviously, from this point on with the calendar, we're working around the state schedule so that our students do have both days.
All right. Good to know. Yeah, because we were doing the alternating spring breaks, and we're going to be moving away from that, then?
Correct, if necessary.
That's what I recall. All right. Hearing nothing more on this, I would entertain a motion for us to, I guess, recover back to the recognition, because the superintendent's report, can we do that?
Yes, but you don't need a motion.
Or don't need a motion, all right. I guess, great, I get discretion to do something then on my own. All right. With that, Peg, I'll reintroduce you, and if you could bring the guest up, please.
Hi. I'd like to introduce Susan Miles. She's from the 3M Foundation, and she just has a few words to say about the partnership with 3M. So welcome, Susan. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm on the short side here. Hopefully, everyone can hear me. Just on behalf of 3M Foundation and 3M Gives, we are excited about the partnership that we are taking as part of the Hudson School District, primarily to increase STEM education and other opportunities that we can do for funding in terms of getting our students engaged more in STEM, as well as really putting a focus on getting girls more involved in STEM. So it's just a great opportunity for us to be in partnership with you, and we know as we go forward, there will be other opportunities, and we, hopefully, it will be totally successful as you go forward. So again, we appreciate the opportunity to help fund STEM opportunities in the Hudson High School area.
Open it up for any other board member comments on that.
Just want to express our appreciation to 3M for their partnership, and it's because of these kind of partnerships that we can advance these things, and we recognize that, and we want to just express our appreciation to you for representing them tonight.
Thank you. And also, what we'd like to do is we want to be able to tell the story about how STEM is growing. And so when you have events or your programs are up and running, please send us stories and photos and things like that. That helps us tell not only your story, but our story as a foundation of what we're doing and how we're being involved in the community.
Well, again, thank you for your support. We really appreciate the partnership. I'd mentioned some comments before you got here that we have a lot of 3M employees in the school district, a lot of retired 3M people who had successful careers here. And it's great when we can partner together and offer opportunities that those employees didn't have when they were in school. And we're very excited about our academy, our STEM Academy, and the future for that, and also, like you said, working in females into the area. I happen to have a son who's at UW-Stout, and I just was over there the other day, and there was a room full of engineering students trying to download SolidWorks, a software program, onto their computers. And I think I saw two or three women in the room, and it was filled with men. So we, if we can do something there to even that out, if you will, but we have a lot of areas in STEM emphasis that we could use help with, so we thank you for that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on with reports. I guess we're going to turn over to Tim Erickson. The next item under reports is secondary space for learning referendum, and it's the Red Brick Road property planning for either public utilities or onsite well and septic. I think we also have someone here from Hoffman, I don't know if
We do.
Speaking on this subject?
Yes, on this subject. So I'm going to have Mark Volkey from Hoffman come forward up to the table. While Mark is making his way up, we do have the, just as a refresher, we've got the diagram of the Red Brick Road site along with Rivercrest, so you can see again how the two sites really work together. And again, there's no vehicular traffic that will be passing through the elementary site, but we'll be sharing, we have an opportunity to share the two sites. Mark's going to talk a little bit about how red brick can be served by both public water and sewer or well and septic. So the site can really accommodate either one. So I'm going to turn it over to Mark unless you've got any questions on the site drawing, and then Mark will go through his report.
Now is it on? Okay. Thank you for having me here again this evening. Basically, very briefly, I'm just going to talk about the utility situation for the Red Brick Road site. And Tim made the same, the main point that I wanted to make is that it's an ore situation. There's public utilities adjacent to the property, and we also did some testing to make sure that if the option was necessary, that we could do well and septic on the property. I mentioned that there is, when Rivercrest was done, city water and sewer were extended at that time, and that was the southern, as that was annexed, that became the southern border of the city. So the north property line of the Red Brick Road property is the city, in the city. So we are adjacent. And if, for public utilities, the property would either have to be annexed, as was Rivercrest, or there would have to be some other type of action by the city, but the city would control the public utility situation. So that, we'd have to work with the city on that. As I mentioned, we did have Bowdoin Engineering, who's, they're highly regarded in private well and septic engineering in the state. We did have them do a preliminary study to look at a well, and they determined that it was feasible, that a well for a high school on the site was feasible. At the same time, they looked at the soil conditions on the property, and also had a state representative as part of that analysis. They had a state representative come out, and they concurred with their analysis of the soils on site that a septic system would be feasible also for a high school on the site. I guess, from my experience, or I should say, our experience, just as with Rivercrest, typically, when we work on schools that are either in the city or adjacent to the city, they would be served by public utilities. That's usually preferable. And I just listed a few of the items as to why I would say it's preferable. There's lower initial cost. Rather than putting in a septic field and drilling a deep well, we can just extend the utilities that are there. That would, obviously, that would be part of the development of the school, would be to extend public utilities if that were worked out with the city. Operational costs, septic and well, there'd be, those would be private, they would be owned by the school district, and there would be ongoing testing on a regular basis, and there would be operational costs. And also, you probably need a certified operator, because it would be a large enough septic system where you may need a certified operator, and that would be probably, it would be an ongoing cost, a yearly cost, to have someone operate the system. And then, I guess, one other thing, or a couple of other things. The septic system obviously would consume some of the land, so that would be something that we'd have to take a look at as part of the design. But if that were the selected option, we'd have to take a look at that, but it would consume more land than if we just had public utilities. And then the other thing is, with public utilities, they are just that, they're public. So the extensions would be owned and maintained by the city. Now, there would be, obviously, just as any citizen or business or any constituent in the, or user in the city, there would be, you'd have your typical water and sewer fees and costs associated with that. And then the other thing is, if the city, if you did get public utilities and became an annexation situation, is there are other benefits to that, such as you fire, you'd have the option of city fire and police protection, which sometimes can be a benefit over other options. That's really it. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. President, just a question, Mark, regarding the certified operator. Do you see that as a full-time position or incorporated into existing?
No, I think it would be probably a situation where you'd hire someone that does that for other, for other companies or other districts or whatever. But no, I don't, I don't think it would have to be a full-time district employee.
Is there any advantage on one system or the other regarding a spray clean system as far as?
Fire protection is probably better served with public utilities. If you have a private well or your own well, you would, well, either case, you may need booster pumps, but with a public, it's probably, would be considered a little bit more reliable.
And I assume, then, if we had the design of this building to try and get the lead status, gold or whatever level, I'm just thinking of down at UW River Falls, where one of their buildings, they recycle the water they use for use in the toilets and so forth. And is that something that does not impact, or is there an advantage for one system or the other with regard to potentially?
I don't think so. I don't think so. As far as the reuse of the water, no.
Right.
I don't think that would make a difference.
All right. But basically, you said the advantage was the upfront costs, and then, I'm sorry, on the maintenance of the septic versus the ongoing fees that you'd have with city sewer and water, how those compare?
Yeah, the septic system, I mean, there's ongoing maintenance. You would own it. The school district would own it and operate it. And it has a lifespan. It may be 20, 30 years, but then there would be maintenance, addition, or replacement costs at that time period also. Public utilities, you know, if you put in good, the materials they use for utility extensions nowadays are very good, and if they're well-installed, they could easily last 50 years or more.
Then the other thing was the design of the building is going to be for a capacity of 1650 with potential expansion in the future, if necessary, to 2,000. Is that something that similarly the utilities would be sized for potential expansion?
Yeah, either, either option, you'd certainly want to take into account the maximum. For public utilities, that difference would be very minimal. I mean, as far as a pipe size to serve, the difference between 1,600 and 2,000 would be really minimal. It might be the same, it might end up being the same pipe size. For septic and well, for the well, it probably wouldn't make a lot of difference. For the septic, obviously, there'd be a little bit larger field that would have to be, or green space that would have to be used for the septic field.
Okay. Any other questions, then, on this item?
Mr. President?
Yes?
Just briefly, you mentioned, Mark, other actions that the city could take if annexation wasn't approved and we didn't have city sewer and water. Are you talking about Are you talking about a solution similar to what we talked about at UU?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be a, I don't know all the other options, because I don't know the, all the legalities of it. But there are, there are situations where cities serve outside of their city limits, and they set up a separate sanitary district or a utility district or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mark or Tim? All right, very good. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
And now move on to secondary space for learning referendum and clarification, I guess this is back to Tim regarding the property tax increase, there's a clarification?
Right. This really came up as a, as a question from, that's come up a couple of times. And the concern, the concern was that taxes would increase 4% each year for the referendum. And so that's not, that is not accurate. The referendum, when you look at the mill rate increase of 99 cents or 13, 99 cents or $1.12, if you add the two together, that impact is flat. It would be flat over the 22 years of payments. So it's not an increasing amount, it's just, it's a flat amount over that 22 years. So there, I think it's just a good thing to point that out. So roughly, you know, for question number one, it's about $17 per month. And if it's question number one and two, then it's $19 per month. And that's a, that is a flat rate for a $200,000 home out for that 22-year period.
And that's with those other assumptions that are in the...
Right. And I'll just, I'll just hit on those a little bit. So when you look at the, in the, built into the assumptions here, it assumes a borrowing rate of 4.2% on average. Currently, rates are lower than that, but we've got to, we've got to build in some cushion in case rates were to rise. But this is a pretty conservative rate right now. And if you look at, if you look at the mill rate in relation to the average growth in the district, so valuation growth in the district, this year, we're projecting an average grow, an annual growth of about 7%. In 2014, the assumption is that would drop down to 2% for four years. And then for the remaining years, it would drop down to zero. So that's, that's again, a very conservative assumption. If values were to increase more than that, the impact would be less. If the interest rate comes in below the 4.2, the impact will be less. So that's just kind of a, again, a brief summary, just addressing that concern that was raised.
All right. And with that one assumption regarding the growth of the tax base, that 7% has already been realized for 2013 into 2014?
The Department of Revenue hasn't come out with school district valuations yet. They'll come out with those in October for us. But what we do is we project based on the values that have been given or issued to the municipalities. And so the seven is, we're usually, when we do that projection, we're usually within a fraction of a percent. So pretty confident that's going to be very close to 7% this year.
But then 2% for four years after that and zero after. And that's something that, I guess, we had a slide last special meeting, I think for sure, maybe the last two meetings, about the mill rates and levies and so forth. And the tax base has gone up, I think, virtually every year, except when we had the recession and it went down.
Yeah, we've had, we've had a couple of years during that recession where it went down, but otherwise, every year after that, it's gone, it's gone up, so.
All right. Well, does anyone else have a question or comment on this?
Mr. President?
Sandy?
Well, Tim, I'm trying to digest these figures. And I may be at a disadvantage, because the meeting where Mr., the guy from Baird explained it, I was not there. I think that's the second meeting in two years I've missed, and, you know, I'd have the flu the night that he was going to explain all of this. So I've been going through it and trying to get my mind wrapped around what we're doing here. So I have a couple of questions. If, if both of the referendums pass, both of them, will we be borrowing that amount of money on the same parameters for both referendums? I mean, same interest rate?
Yes, the same interest rate.
Same source of funds?
Right. Yep, the issue, so the issues would be, so if both questions pass, the six and a half will be, will be issued in the same increments as the 99 million.
Okay, same payback time?
Right, yep.
So really, no difference in the borrowing between the two referendums?
No, they would be treated as, so the two questions would be treated as one if both questions pass.
Okay. Then I have a question about the table, this. In looking at this, I was working with these numbers today. The six and a half million you're saying is 13 cents per thousand, right?
Right.
And the 99.9 million is 99 cents per thousand. But if I take the six and a half million and divide it into the 99.9 million, I get a multiplication factor of 15.261. But then when I went down to do that to the mill rate increase, it comes out as half that. So is there an explanation for that, why that would work, why that would be that way?
Yeah. So when, when the 99 million, when that was developed, as far as the debt structure, and that's developed to take, you know, take into account the debt drops. So as we pay off older debt, this is filling in and replacing that older debt. So when we got to question two, the reason that impact, that mill rate increase is higher per thousand dollars of borrowing, is that that, that piece does not take, is not able to take advantage of those debt service drops.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I think one of the things that Baird explained that was easier for me is when you were looking at the blended cost. Those total dollars tie out, when they broke it down into two pieces, and you can correct me if I'm getting off track here a little bit, Tim, but when they broke it down into two pieces, they applied that drop off of the debt to the first piece, but not the second.
That's exactly right.
Mr. President?
Carrie?
In a committee meeting, I had your exact question, because it didn't make sense to me either. And that, I don't know if this explanation is yet making sense. Is it?
No.
It sounds like all the benefit from the drop off in the...
Right.
Retirement is going to the first question. Even though, if both questions pass, it'll obviously be spread out on the whole amount. But it's not reflected on this chart.
Right. I understand the drop off of the debt, and I understand that that's going to be applied to the first question.
First question, right.
What I'm trying to get at is what is the cost of the 100 million? We don't really, you're not giving us that figure. The, what you're saying here, this 99 cents and the $198 for $200,000 house, that isn't the cost of the whole $100 million project, is it?
That would be, that's just, that's the tax impact, looking over time with those debt retirements.
That's the tax, additional tax impact for the 60 million additional that we're borrowing. But it's not the, it's not the entire cost of the whole 100 million, because you're dropping off 40 million and you're just going to replace it. Am I right?
And that's what, that, that's the, you know, that's kind of the whole advantage of this, is that we've got some good timing here with that debt retirement. And so that, there's debt dropping off, and so those are, those are filled in with the new debt. And that's how we get to that level, which is that low impact of 99 cents on the first question.
I, I understand the concept of some debt dropping off and other debt going on, and I understand what you're doing here. All I'm asking for is the figure, the real figure of what a $100 million project is going to cost. Forget about the 40 million. By the way, do you know how much we owe? Is, is the amount that we already owe 40 million? Is that the balance on our debt owed that we now owe?
No, that would not be the amount. We've got, actually, we've got an amount...
What is the amount?
Actually, I can tell you the amount, yeah, if you give me a minute.
Mr. President, while he's looking for that, just a comment, and Sandy, I guess, would it be more helpful, because scenario one is if option one passes, right? So scenario two necessarily wouldn't happen unless scenario one passed. So the second alternative would really be just over 107 million, so that would be the scenario that you're looking to see, not the 99 million. Without the debt service coming out?
If we were to pay our debt off today, if we wrote the check today, what do we owe?
So if we wrote the check today?
Mm-hmm.
So we've got about 30, roughly $30 million.
Okay, thank you.
That would be today. And we don't, yeah, and as far as just purely what the impact would be if we didn't have the debt service drop off, I understand what you're asking. I'd have, we'd have to go back and re-figure that to find out.
That's the only figure I'm looking for. I know what we're telling the public. I want to be able to tell people who are asking me, what is the, what is a $100 million project, the total cost? Not with 40 million dropping off and 40 million replacing it, but the total cost of that project. That's the only figure I'm looking for. So if you could figure that, you can probably email it to me, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions for Tim then?
Mr. President? Isn't the more relevant cost to our taxpayer, what the net impact is going to be on their tax statement? I mean, I don't understand how, I understand what Sandy's asking for, but I don't understand, if I'm a taxpayer and I'm looking at a referendum, I want to know what that net impact to my household is going to be.
Okay. Brian, did you have a...
I just want to stress that, that the simple question is, is when we, if we, when we bill the schools, how should my taxes go up? And the, and the answer is, for a $200,000 house, if both referendum questions are approved, it's $19 a month. It's a cost of a PTA.
Mr. President?
Yes, Sandy?
I've been asked the question, what is the total cost of the project? And when I tell them $198 on a $200 million, or $200,000 house, in my mind, I think that isn't, that's not the total cost. It's a, it's a total tax increase. I get that. That's what the tax increase is going to be. But let's, let me ask you this. If we paid off that 30 million tomorrow, how much would our taxes go down if we paid it off?
You want me to say, answer that right now?
No, no. I'm just asking that as a question. So to try to help you understand where I'm having the problem.
Right, I understand.
If we borrow, if we paid it off and didn't have it, and weren't replacing it with part of this referendum debt, how much would the taxes go down?
Right. We have to make some assumptions that we have no debt, or that we pay off all our debt exactly. Yep, I definitely understand what you're asking.
Thanks, thanks, Tim. I figured you would understand what I'm trying to get at. And I'm just looking for the figure, that's all. So, thank you.
Part of that is going to also be, have to be based on a bunch of assumptions as well, I'm assuming. Again, with assumptions of no tax base growth and so forth.
Right. We'd have to build in a set of assumptions in that scenario, yeah.
Right. All right. Any other questions?
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate you.
Sure.
All right. Anything else on that, on the reports?
Yeah, my only comment is, I think we have to be careful with questions and assumptions like that. If we, if we didn't do this, what do the taxes go down? I would say if we didn't do this, people don't move into our district. We have a smaller, we have a smaller tax base. So, I mean, I think, I think those kind of what-if scenarios are a dangerous slope, because it's a lot of assumptions. So, so I just think that's a, we can ask a lot of different questions, but I think it goes back to, if we bill the school, how much is the tax increase? And it's $19.
Well, and that assumption of us being able to pay off the debt today, do we have 30 million, Tim, that we could do that?
No, we don't.
No. So we'd have to increase everyone's taxes by that 30 million to pay it off in the one year?
Yes, you'd have to increase taxes to pay that off in one year.
All right. I don't know how many more scenarios we need to give you on this, but in the end, we borrow over time for a reason, because we don't want to impact the taxpayers tremendously in any one given year. That's why we do bonds over a 20-year period of time, correct?
Yeah. When, you know, for example, if you look at New Richmond, when they did their referendum, it was about a $2.50 impact versus 99 cents here. St. Croix Central is going out for about 20, I believe it's about 24 million, and I believe that impact is about the same as what we have. And that's, again, it's about taking advantage of the restructuring to keep taxes as level and keep the, the total impact of taxes on the taxpayer as minimal as possible.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? All right. And moving on, Mr. Minor, do we have citizens, any citizens requesting to speak?
All right. Then we're done with five and six. Moving on to topics for action on consent items, I guess I would entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. President? I'd like to move approval of the consent items and that the Director of Financial Services be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $1,446,457.04.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and being consent items, there's no discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. And then on to committee reports. Lynn, you had the only committee that met since our last school board meeting.
See how that works? Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I have a brief update, because most of these will be covered in the next meeting, but Andrea gave us an overview of the strategic compensation plan. We're having some challenges with, with the response time from our previous vendor, so we've...
It was an actual vendor who was not complying, and so we have a different vendor we're selecting.
Yeah, that was, I was, I gave that, Andrea was just saying she wasn't there, and she's right. That was, we discussed the actuarial study in relation to the benefit, yeah.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay. So anyways, we're, we're expecting a delay on that report compared to the timeline that we had previously. So the turnaround time should be September, right? Is that correct? I know there was a November date that was thrown out there, and then...
Yeah, we're, we're looking at, you're right, the first report would be September, and then we'd have some back and forth, and we'd be looking at December to come back with information to the board.
Okay. Thank you. Then Tim reviewed the year-end budget update, annual meeting documents were reviewed, and the board policy, 7,600 that we just approved, and the consent items.
Any questions for Lynn and the Finance Committee? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, we stand adjourned, and we'll reconvene for the annual meeting at 7:00 PM. Those opposed, we stand adjourned, and we'll reconvene for the annual meeting at seven PM.